I'm gonna call the order of the city council meeting for the city of Rainbow City for Monday, November 10th of 2025, and I'm gonna ask Beth Lee to call our roll, and it'll be followed by the invocation led by Jeff Prince, and then the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, that you've blessed us with. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity that we can come and gather together to discuss the business of this city. And Lord, as we approach tomorrow being Veterans Day, Lord, we just lift up all of our veterans and give them the thanks that they deserve, that we have the right to even be here tonight. Father, we thank you for all your many blessings, and may everything that we say and do reflect your love. For us in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you turn your cell phones to the off or vibrate position, we'd appreciate it, and I'll ask Beth Lee to call the roll.
Jerry Ramsey.
Here.
Randy Weiss.
Here.
Jeff Prince.
Here.
Jamison Jenkins.
Here.
Clark Hopper.
Here.
Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five is approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 27th and the organizational meeting of November 3rd, 2025, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six is the oath of office for Clark Hopper. Clark was out of town when we did our organizational meeting, and we're gonna go ahead and do that now and issue his oath of office. I state your name.
I, Clark Hopper.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue as citizen.
As long as I continue to be a citizen.
Thereo.
Thereo.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
And I faithfully and honestly will discharge.
The duties of the office upon which I am about to enter. The duties of the office upon which I am about to enter.
The duties of the office of which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And for the official record, we missed you last week, Clark.
Yes.
Well, I missed y'all.
No.
Well, it sounded good.
Number seven is a personnel change, and it's to hire Madeline Sims, animal control effective Friday, November 14th of 2025, and I'd entertain a motion that we make that hiring.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight is the appointment for the planning commission, a member of the council position, and what would be the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Clark Hopper.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call vote and include me.
Jerry Ramsey.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number nine is to issue a credit card for council member Jerry Ramsey through Exchange Bank to be used for education and travel with a credit limit of $2,000, and I'd entertain a motion that we issue that card.
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call.
Jerry Ramsey.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 10 is to increase the credit limit on the animal shelter through the EXBA from $2,000 to $7,500, and I'd entertain a motion that we make that increase to their credit card limit.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 11 is to appoint Anita Bedwell to the utilities board to replace Eddie Sylvie for a six-year term to expire November 10th of 2031, and I'd entertain a motion that we make that.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call vote and include me.
Jerry Ramsey.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 12 is to appoint Mayor Taylor to the utilities board to replace former council member Anita Bedwell, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call vote and don't include me.
Jerry Ramsey.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Number 13 is professional services agreement to engage with the East Bay Group LLC to advocate for Rainbow City in the Alabama Legislature and in the other state and federal agencies as directed. The cost will be $2,500 a month, and I'd entertain a motion that we enter into that agreement.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, let's do a roll call vote, just so that we can put that to the record.
Jerry Ramsey.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 14 is to authorize Mayor Taylor to sign the fiscal year 26 A-trip two project application adding turn lanes on Highway 411 at Vivian Lee Maddox Sports Complex. Volkeren Incorporated is the project engineer. The estimated project cost is $2,578,987. Rainbow City will be responsible for 20% of the project cost. The maximum A-trip two funds available is $2 million, and I'd entertain a motion that you allow me that authorization.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call vote and include me.
Randy, Jerry Ramsey.
Yes.
Randy Weiss.
Yes.
Jeff Prince.
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins.
Yes.
Clark Hopper.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 15 is proposal from the local government corporation. It's, this is just a housekeeping thing, so miscellaneous receding was left off the original proposal dated April 1 of 2025, and the annual use and remote support fee is $3,504. The annual cloud-based software is $6,570, and I'd entertain a motion that we add those to our proposal.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 16 is resolution number 25-24. Rainbow City to enter into an agreement with Aldot relating to an industrial access road off Lumley Road to benefit SMD Steel LLC. Cost of the project is $1,104,200. Rainbow City is responsible for the preliminary engineering costs, right-of-way costs, utility costs, and any project overruns, and I'd entertain a motion that we move on that resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just as a point of understanding, we don't have any right-of-way costs in that. The utility costs are already, it's already in place, and we don't foresee any project overruns because we've actually closed down on that scope of work. Number 17 is the 2026 holiday schedule, and I would entertain a motion that we pass that as written and deliver to you.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 18 is a budget revision for our library to increase to reflect a $4,000 community service grant awarded by Representative Mac Butler. The summer reading program would receive $3,000, and that would go to the account number shown, and supplies under the general category in the account shown for $1,000. I'd entertain a motion that we accept that.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 19 is surplus library open sealed bids for Monday, November 24th of 2025, and it's one rolling adjustable laptop cart, four sets of mauve window blinds, sure somebody will want those, three framed prints, and one desk chair with arms, and I'd entertain a motion that we surplus those items.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 20 is presentation for Ribbon Warriors, Ribbon Warriors and Never Surrender, and I'm gonna ask Katie McDaniel. And do we have a representative of Never Surrender here? We don't. So I'm gonna ask Katie to come up and just talk just a little bit. Yeah, it'll take you an hour and a half.
She did that two-step.
I would just like to thank everyone that has purchased a Rainbow City breast cage or awareness shirt. It means the world to me, and also to the Mayor Taylor who has donated additional money towards that. I cannot wait to see how I can bless others during this time of each journey that each person has gone through, because I was very, very blessed during my own journey. So I just wanna take this time to thank everybody who has helped and put money towards this donation. I appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
We appreciate you, Katie. We also wanna thank Vicki Robinson. Vicki was Katie's cohort in this and came up with the idea. They came to me and asked if the city would help partner with them, and of course, we did, but also, I personally have done that. I'm the pink fire truck guy. I bought that fire truck because a friend of mine's wife was suffering and ends up being a survivor, and so it's just always been something that's near and dear to me. But we appreciate what you've done big time, Katie. We're gonna have you come up, and let's at least get our picture made with this, with a little check presentation. Again, we're just thankful for Katie and Vicki, you know, for heading up that, and especially the ladies in the revenue department, Beth's office as well. You know, that's extra work for them, just making sure that those t-shirts got sold and got to the appropriate place, and I can't thank you enough. And I do know about Never Surrender. I'm not familiar with the Ribbon Warriors, but I'm sure that they're gonna put that to good use, and we appreciate you more than you know, Katie. Number 21 is a sponsorship request for the James M. Berry for Children. It's the kickoff classic for the kids golf tournament to be held on Thursday, November 13th, 2025, at Gadsden Country Club, and what would be the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we sponsor in the amount of $1,000 for the children's advocate.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 22 is 2026 Current Magazine with the Edwall Chamber. The ad options are shown, and what would be the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we do half-page for $900.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 23 is monthly department reports. Is there any of the department heads that'd like to speak? Anyone? Philip, you wanna come up and give us a little bit of an update on what we've got going in Parks and Recreation? I know there's a ton going on, and people are looking at those things.
Philip really loves this part.
I'll do about this part. Thank you. I appreciate that. No, things are rolling right along, so as far as the field renovations are going, we're down to, I guess, number eight, which is the track. The last two baseball and softball fields are 95% complete, so should be mostly completed, if not totally completed, by either the sweet weather permitting. So as you drive by, obviously, you'll see a great difference that is there. So thank you, guys, for giving us a vision and led me to, you know, these couple of different projects along the way. And then, as far as I know, we're still on track. Haven't heard the actual update from Matt Wagner as far as the rec center, but they're moving right along, so it should be dropped in completely pretty soon, and then the interior painting and all that. So hopefully, early first quarter sometime, the doors will be open there as well.
Yeah, you wanna give us a report on the concession stands, when they'll start?
So I have, on the concession stand renovation part, they should start here in a couple of weeks. Once baseball is over with, I was speaking with one of the partners today, get some stuff in line, and he said he should be able to start on the 18th, hopefully in there. So then, the other partner that took the other half of the job, I'm still waiting on the actual date for a meal, and so hopefully by, probably the end of the year, maybe we should see, you know, some renovations and completions of those as well. So if not, it'll be the first part of the year. Obviously, this time of year with weather is a big part of what they do and, you know, moving along. So hopefully by the end of the year, you know, those projects are mostly completed.
So we're actually talking about, there's five projects that are caught up in that Public Works project, and it's our, it's three concession stands, the canopy's down at Park Street, and there's.
And Vivian, the one inside.
And Vivian, the one inside the Clover Leaf at Vivian Maddox. So, but we appreciate it, and I know that's been a lot on you, and I know you guys have been having to work around a lot of construction, and they've done really, really well, and just relay that message to them that we appreciate.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Anyone else, as far as department reports? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Anyone? Yep, Phil? We'd ask that you come, we'll just ask that you come up here. Give us your name and address for the poke record.
My name is Phil Baxter. I live at 108 Country Church Road here in Rainbow City. For many years, this is down in the Rainbow Estates area, for many years, I've just noticed what goes on with the Halloween down in there, and I've got a paper I'll give to Beth to give to y'all since there's no way to individually contact y'all as councilman. I think that needs to be addressed. They all go through one email address. That reduces transparency here. So I think each council member should.
Sir, let me interrupt you. That's not accurate. We all have our individual email addresses, they're on our business cards, and they're on the website, with all due respect.
Okay, I searched the website and could not find them, you know. It's not very clear on there where they are. The only way it says to get to y'all is through the mail. And so if I'd known that, you know, it might have preempted a little bit this evening, but I mean, I did try. But this is about Halloween. I've thought about this for years and years, and watched what's going on in our subdivision. I don't know about any other subdivisions because I don't even get away from our house because of the number of kids that come through there, and that's absolutely great. But I'm gonna give this to Beth, if y'all would please read it individually. And it just makes some recommendations, kind of, but it's just opinions on how we can make it a more safe way for the children to come out and enjoy, you know, a neighborhood and the people in the neighborhood come out. And I do appreciate everything y'all have done as far as the recreations and everything. It's just been a great improvement for our community, I think.
Can I ask you something before you go away? Did you feel like the changing of the routing and the route plan that we had put together this time, do you think it helped or hurt?
For the traffic.
For traffic?
On Williams.
Mainly on Williams, because that is our street that we work on most of the time.
Really, you're talking about a Williams Avenue.
Yes, sir.
I think that was a great idea. Actually, the week before, I told my wife, I said, you know, if nothing else, it would just help if they made this one-way street. And then Donna Patterson had commented about that had been done, and so I'm sure that really improves the safety. I actually mentioned that in here. You know, and there are some other things that would be, I think, beneficial in there, and, you know, I'm not gonna bore you with all those things because they're in here.
No, that's fine. We appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you a lot.
Yes, if you'll leave those for us, we'd appreciate it. Chief, do you wanna come up and just kinda talk about what you guys did and how that worked out for us?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Phil.
Yes.
So yeah, I appreciate the recommendations, and, you know, my guys also, we recognized, you know, really, there's always been, every year, we just see more and more and more people coming down, Cove Bridge and Williams Avenue and all that. So this year, you know, I got my command guys, and I was like, hey, we gotta do something. I don't know exactly what the perfect plan's gonna be, but we, you know, we at least need to start somewhere. That's why we started there. So I hope that they'll let me read some of those recommendations, so, because I'm interested too, because like I said, and I said this one again, and I may have posted it in the Rainbow Estates page, saying like, this is what we're doing this year. It might not look like this in the future, but we gotta get there and start doing something. I've had pretty good feedback from this year. Almost everybody I've talked to and asked has had really good feedback on the one-way and officer presence. We had more officer presence all night. We actually had a whole shift come in off duty. Obviously, they were getting paid overtime, but they were literally a whole shift plus me was down there off of Williams Avenue and Cove Bridge. And they saw a few things that they didn't like and addressed very quickly, you know, with people maybe driving a little bit too fast and stuff like that. So I'm just glad we were down there, and I'm glad we had a great Halloween. We did. We had a great turnout in Williams Avenue and Cove Bridge, so.
We sure did. Thank you, chief. We appreciate that. I think the biggest takeaway from this is just that I'm thrilled to death to know that we have a city that's safe for our kids to be able to come in here, and their families bring them down here to trick or treat, when there are places now that kids just can't go and feel that kind of safety especially. And they get a chance to go into our neighborhoods and just see what our people, how they feel about our kids. So we thank you, and I appreciate your neighborhood, Phil. I know Jeff lives down there as well, and it's always been a big treat to know that, you know, we bring 3,000, 4,000 people into our city and increase our city by 30, 40%, and that's a pretty big deal for us. We'll go to council comments, and I'll start with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, Veterans Day week is a huge week for each and every one of us, the sacrifices that people have made over the years to keep this country the greatest country on the face of the earth, and in my opinion, the greatest country ever. And it could not have been done without the sacrifice of each and every man and woman, whether active, reserve, or guard, and I can't say enough about that, so I won't say anything else, except it is an amazing military that we have, each and every branch of that military. And I'm also excited that Alabama's gonna get headquarters to the newest branch of that military, or at least division of the Air Force, the Space Command. So, but again, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans and active-duty people serving out there, wherever you are. Anything we can do to fight the scourge of cancer, I will always be supportive of that, and I appreciate each and every person who's putting forth an effort through fundraising, community organizations, or whatnot, to do that. And hopefully, in our lifetime, if not the lifetimes of our children, it will be eradicated from not only our area, but from the face of the earth. But I do appreciate also all the public comments. Congratulations, Clark, by the way. Glad to serve another four with you. But all the public comments and things of that nature, thank you, guys, so much. We are, each and every one of us, available to each and every one of you a phone call. And if the information, Mr. Baxter's not on the website, we'll make sure it is, and if that's the case, then I apologize. But it should be. But having said all of that, Rainbow City is still the greatest city that I've ever lived in, and I've lived in a lot. Okay, that's not exactly accurate. I've lived in Reed's Mill, Webster's Chapel, St. Louis, Longview, Washington, but anyway. But having said each and every one of that, this is the greatest city I've ever been. The people are the greatest people, and it's because of the residents, the support staff, and the government. I appreciate all of it. And I owe the remaining bit of my time to Mayor Taylor.
Mr. Ramsey.
I wanna start off by congratulating Clark, Councilman Hopper, on his swearing in, and happy to see his family here. Happy to serve with you for the next four years. I would like to thank all the veterans that. I want to thank Katie for everything she does for that organization. It's fantastic. I was happy to grab a few of those shirts whenever that time came. So just want to thank Mr. Baxter for coming up here and expressing his opinions and continuing to maintain a Bell South email account. That's pretty amazing. But, yeah, I want to thank all of our city employees for everything they do to make this a great place, and all our first responders for supporting our city at the top of the safest list in Alabama. So that's all. Thank y'all.
Mr. Prince.
I don't know how to take that. Councilman, I have a Bell South personally. Of course, the obvious, the Veterans Day, it's been mentioned a couple of times already, and I actually mentioned it in my opening prayer, but to all of our veterans, these times make me really not just thankful and grateful, but I don't know what the right word is, to be quite honest, for the men and women that have served our country fearlessly. And our mayor was one of those, and I'm very grateful for that. That's the only reason we're being able to sit here tonight, is because we live in a free country. So thank you to all of our veterans. I want to thank Matt Butler for the grant for our library. That will be, I'm sure, used properly and for good, put into good use. The fields that our recs and parks are doing, I don't see if he's paying attention, Phil. That's one of the most exciting things I think we've done. I think all of us up here, that and the community center, you know. And then you start hearing ATRIP and ALDOT and seeing that on our agenda. That's a lot of progress happening in our city. It doesn't come easy. There are times when we feel like all we are is beggars. When we go to the state and to the federal government, they won't know how much you want this year, but it's exciting times. I guess I'll wrap this up by saying it's exciting times in Rainbow City. There's so much going on. I just envision in 10 years, we really won't recognize some of the things that we feel like we are in this Rainbow City. So, and Dr. Baxter, I do appreciate you being my neighbor and voicing your opinion. That's why we're here. And anytime you need anything, you know where I live. And I hope, like Councilman Vice, I hope our email addresses are online, and if they're not, we will get that addressed. This year, I did see, and let's start out, about 26 years ago, I was scared to death in my first Halloween in Cover Bridge, because there were so many kids. I'd never seen anything like that. And that has grown so much that now my kids have kids, or one of them, and I get to bring grandkids and all the in-laws, outlaws, and we just have a really, my wife loves that holiday. So we have a really great time. And this year, not just the one making Williams Avenue one-way, and I thank our chief for coming up with that idea. He asked a couple of us about that, and it turned into a good idea. But I saw a lot more police presence out there. And one in particular, one of our officers had a little boy that had gotten separated from his mama and was scared to death. And we had a police officer on the side-by-side riding him through that mess of sea of people. You know, I had an officer actually stop, of course, it scared me to death, because he got on his speaker, stopped the car on Cover Bridge before he got to the bridge, because he was going a little too fast for the crowd that was there. So we're always interested in the community's opinions on how to make things even better. So thank you for being here with that. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just echo first what's already been said about Veterans Day. Our city is full of employees, including the mayor, who have served in our military, so we appreciate the contributions that they have made and continue to make in our city. We're very grateful for them. Katie, appreciate you and everybody else who was involved with the T-shirts. Claire and I have been repping ours all month, and we're very grateful for you and everybody else that was involved in that and what y'all do. Another thing I want to say is, we had a good week of training with the Alabama League of Municipalities in Huntsville this week. KIV, for those that don't know, signed a law this year that now requires municipal officials that are elected across the state of Alabama to receive continuing education credits annually. And so that is a new requirement, and it's a good thing, because it ensures that elected officials know what's going on and how to follow the law. Thankful for a city who makes sure that we're educated to do our jobs well. That's all I have.
Mr. Hopper.
I want to thank everybody for coming out. I'm glad to serve this community for another four years. Jerry, welcome. We'll eventually get your name on a plaque there, so people know who you are. You know, Veterans Day is always special. Joe, the mayor here, he served. You served Vietnam. You came back and nobody really cared about you. Nobody cared about the Vietnam veterans. You know, they just-
I was the only veteran at church Sunday who spoke up. Some came to me after church-
Yes, ma'am.
And said out loud to me, but they wouldn't say it in public. I've got something, one of the comments come up to the public. I've got something to say.
You know, and we've had popular wars, and we've had unpopular wars, but at the end of the day, we as a country, eventually, we always fix it and get it right. I've got a son and a plus-one, Ashley, over there, Christian and Ashley, they served in the Navy. They gave me about one, one, two, three, three of the six out there that I've got sitting on the front row. My father, he served until he retired from the National Guard. You know, he was a Green Beret paratrooper, then went to the tank divisions. So leading into that, Veteran Day or Memorial Day is always a great holiday to take time and really think, like we've talked about, what people have done for this country, what we are allowed to do now, what we can and can't do. Because they fought for our freedom. They fought for the right to have this assembly. They fought for this right for you to have education. They fought for the right for you to be able to marry whoever you want to, regardless of religion, sex, color, whatever. These are the things this country has done, starting next year for over 250 years. And a lot of it starts with the military back in 1776. Now, with that, also, because six made me think about it, I will be pounding this home probably until December 14th. December 13th, wreaths across America will be celebrating Old Harmony Cemetery. We've got 126 veterans buried in this. We will have a wreath ceremony, and we will take the wreaths and place them on each soldier's grave. We're going to need volunteers. The obvious goal is to have 126 people out there from Rainbow City. It's our proudest moment for our people to put a wreath on their graves. With that, I'm excited about the baseball season. Those fields look just wonderful, even though Phillip had something to do with it. I love Phillip, but I mean, I am proud. And that is one of the proudest moments, like what Councilman Prince was talking about, along with our new rec center, which is going to give us a pool and a splash pad. And I can't wait for that next summer, because I've got six of them playing, you know, right here. Look at them shaking their hands, waving. All right. I do want to thank y'all. I know we had to continue on last week, and I apologize to everybody for missing, but we had booked a cruise two years ago. Election day, last thing on my mind. And me and Christie, along with our youngest boy who served in the Air Force, we spent eight days on a cruise ship and then all that. Now, bringing that up, just because we dealt with the shutdown yesterday. And I want to say this, that, that's any resemblance to what Thanksgiving or Christmas travel is, we're renting a car, we're driving wherever we're going. We are not going to get into that yet. We get to Orlando to just mask tailors. But I'll say this, I expected a lot more rudeness. There was some, but I really expected to be a lot worse, because once we got on the plane to come home, we were 22nd in line to take off. There was 21 planes ahead of us. We were on there in a lukewarm airplane for, you know, let me say, about an hour and a half, two hours, waiting our turn. And we only experienced one or two rude people on that plane, and a lot of children that just kept it together, you know. But with that, I just want to say that I'm proud to serve another four years. I appreciate y'all's belief in me on the planning commission. This will be my second go-around with it. And I tell you, we are starting to see things grow. We're starting to see things expand. What you're doing, what I'm proud of, we only have one councilman that had to deal with a race. And a lot of mayors and councilmen might have just got a little cocky and said, okay, we're going to slow down a little bit. We're not slowing down, are we, Mayor?
That's right.
We're not going to slow down. We're going to keep working for you.
Tuesday, November 11th, City Hall will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. Garbage will be on schedule Monday through Friday. Wednesday, November 12th, groundbreaking for SMD Metals at 300 Infrastructure Way. That's the Lumley Road Industrial Park from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we encourage the public to show up for that. It's a big deal. Wednesday, November 19th, ribbon cutting for Patterson Andrews Wealth Management at 575 Steel Station Road at 12:00 to 1:00, and we encourage you, you all, to come out to that as well. Thursday and Friday, November 27 and 28, City Hall will be closed in observance of Thanksgiving. Garbage will not be serviced on Thursday. Pickup Friday through Saturday. Monday, December 1st, Christmas tree lighting at City Hall, Golden City Quartet, Joyful Juniors, South Side High School Band, food trucks, cookies, and Santa, and also the Rainbow Middle School Band's going to show up. We found that out today. So we're thrilled to get that going. And I'm thankful for Karen Frost for always coordinating all those things for us. Saturday, December 6th, Christmas Mall at the Hall in the parking lot at City Hall. In case of inclement weather, we'll be moving it inside City Hall from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Edgewall County Tag Office at City Hall is closed until January 5th of 2026. And I would encourage you to call our revenue, our Revenue Commissioner, Becky Nordgren, to encourage her to give us a five-day schedule down here year-round. We need that. We obviously fill our chairs continuously through the year, and we do take a lot of pressure off that courthouse by having our tag office open. So I would, I would encourage you to send an email, a nice email, and let her know that we need that, we need that service to be expanded here in Rainbow City. Our Chamber Hall of Fame, we had eight of our local businesses that were represented in the Small Business Awards, either got a bronze, a silver, or a gold, and the city was actually inducted into the Chamber Hall of Fame and also recognized for being a 75-year-old city. And with that, I don't think I have anything else, except that I will say this, there's a lot of work going into going out to our state and also to our federal government and trying to go and find a way to return your taxpayer money back into this city. We're successful right now, and we're doing that because we have great relationships in Washington, D.C. And because of that, I have to thank this council for being willing to go and accompany me when I go to Montgomery and when I go to D.C. and when I go to see the Director of ALDOT. And the other side of that coin is this, if you don't go, they don't know. And we tend to like to sit around and say bad things about the fact that we've got government agencies that just don't know our name. I'll promise you that, that would be our fault if they didn't. But in our case, they know who Rainbow City is, and they know where we are. With that, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn. Salute. Thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Mayor?
Yes.
I missed the other comment. Somehow I missed that part.
Yes, ma'am, you did, but yes, we'll, I mean, we'll allow that to go if you want to come to the podium.
I thought it came from the comments. My mind's is. Can you hear me?
We can.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, because I'm a new resident of Rainbow City, down at Wiley Meadows Apartments.
Ms. Mayor.
Absolutely incredible, and I love living there. I'm so proud to be in Rainbow City. I've never lived in Rainbow City in my life, and I'm loving it.
Good for you.
Everything about it. I got to go to the Boone Fest, because Captain Camp, no, he's not a captain, Cheezy, and I want to thank all of y'all for doing what y'all do up there every week. And Jerry, welcome. We'll get you a tag, I'm sure, but I don't even remember the name from the last time I was here. I want y'all to look for the flag, because I want to tell you something that Veterans Day, y'all may not know. Look at the top red stripe on that flag. And anytime you see the wind blowing the flag, that top red flag is from the breasts of every last person who has died for this country and for every traitor who signed the Declaration of Independence to develop this country for us, we, the people. If you've never seen the Constitution, look it up and read it, please, all of you. And I also want to give thanks to Captain Camp, because we have patrolmen at my church every Sunday. And we either have Lakota or Alyssa there, and that's very important. Some of you may remember the Episcopal Church down in Birmingham, that caught, that shooting that led to a lot of deaths. And thanks be to God, we're not Birmingham. We're not going to have that happen here in Camp Nancy. It's having a lot to do with that, because we have patrolmen right there with us every service. And I also, I had something else I forgot, and I didn't wear my ears, so I couldn't tell what all was going on. Oh, the wreaths. My almas, please, anybody that can be there, I mean, I expect all of y'all will, but anybody that can be there for the lay-in on the wreaths. I've been there once for my husband's in Arlington, and it's an incredible, present time of the year to recognize veterans and the lay-in on those wreaths. And the wreaths are absolutely beautiful, and there's so many of them. And if you ever get a chance to donate to that organization, please do. And it's funded by a lot of different folks, and it takes donations to do a lot of things around here, so please join in on that. And again, thank y'all so very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, and God bless you.
Thank you.